Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, October 3, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The United Republic understands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boyce?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Dole? Crockett? Geske?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of the minutes in everyone's packet. You have the minutes from our September 19, 2022, Board Meeting. Hopefully, everyone has had the opportunity to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections, or changes to the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Make the motion.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second.
Second.
Motion by Phillips, second by Martin. Roll call, please.
Phillips?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries public participation. Does it appear we have any?
No one this evening, Mayor.
Village President's Report. Just a couple items. It'd been talking about this for the last several months and it's getting closer to the deadline. As hopefully everyone knows that we are offering a property tax rebate program for single-family homeowners who've lived in their homes the whole year of 2021. The application is a simple one-page application. There's a few documents that has to be turned in with it. The deadline for applying for this rebate is October 31, the end of business, October 31. So anybody who hasn't, you know, filled out the application, please do so. Anything that comes in that's mailed or dropped off after October 31 will not be qualified. If you, you know, if you lived in the home and you're, you know, had collected no rental income from that home during the course of 20, the whole year 2021, you're eligible. So please encourage anybody who qualifies to turn the rebate form in because, like I say, once the deadline's there, it's too late. Currently, we have 1,069 different applications that have been filed for a total of about $644,000. We have had 16 people who have been, received denial letters and I'm sure there'll be more coming because you've still got a lot of them to go through yet. That, you know, there's hundreds of them that they have to continue to review. But the most, the reasons that some of the people have been denied is because a few of them didn't even live in Mantino. They lived in, you know, outside the, you know, the village limits. They lived in the Versitec or Bourbonay or Moments or wherever, but they had filed. Some of the people had not lived in their house the entire year. A couple people have, you know, have just been, have deceased now since they applied. So there's a variety of different reasons that people may get turned down. But if you qualify, we encourage everybody to, you know, fill out the paperwork and be eligible. The, I, the hope is that, you know, with these will all be received by October 31. They will all be reviewed during, you know, now, from now until the, till, you know, the month of, through the month of November. And we're hoping that these checks will be able to be sent out the first week of December. Sometime in the first two weeks of December, you should hopefully receive your refund check from the Village of Mantino. So we thought that was an ideal time right before Christmas that people would get their refund check. So please, again, if, you know, tell, tell your neighbor, anybody that's qualified. I'm sure that we'll get people that, you know, just didn't know anything about it. But to date, we've had 1,069 people who have. So make sure that, you know, that if you qualify, that you will, you do turn in the paperwork. The only other item I have is just kind of a short report on Oktoberfest. Obviously, Oktoberfest was a week ago. The weather was, you know, was great Saturday night, you know, at the parade. Was, you know, very well attended. Uptown afterwards, you know, I've never seen Main Street as crowded or as packed as it was on that Saturday night. So kudos to the Chamber and everybody who volunteered. The, you know, the carnival had, you know, had lots of lines and I know they did, you know, they did, you know, great. We had very few incidents for having that many people in the community on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Talked with the chief and they had a few minor incidents, but nothing that, you know, of any real consequence for having that many people that, you know, came to enjoy the festival. So thanks to everybody for their patience. A lot of people in town with all the garage sales, with all the different events that were going on. And thanks for the, for the most part, everybody behaving pretty good. I have nothing further. The Village Administrator's Report, Mr. LaRocque.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, though, we have a representative from Smith, Kelling, Dykstra, and Ohm, Carmen Hizinga, who was participated in the audit. This is our annual audit and she's going to give us a little presentation on that. So Carmen?
Hello. I handed out three different reports that you should have in front of you. One is a blue-bound cover report and then two stapled letters. The, in the blue-bound report, that's the actual annual financial report, the annual financial statements of the village. And in the beginning of that, I will point out our opinions on your financial statements. So page one is our independent auditor's report. And we've given unmodified opinions on most of the opinion units. The governmental activities, which is a high level, does have a qualified opinion and only because there are other post-employment benefits that the village has decided not to hire an actuary for to do some calculations for some liabilities and other disclosures. And therefore, we just qualify in that. And I believe this is the third year in a row that we've presented it like that. So that is nothing new. But other than that, they're all unmodified opinions. If you go to page five, that's our report on your internal control over financial reporting and also on compliance and other matters. And that's based on our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So if we had any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, those would be reported in this report. If we had any material non-compliance that we noted during the audit, that would be listed here as well. We had none of those things. So it's just the boilerplate language in that report as well. Following the, our opinions, beginning on page seven, is management's discussion and analysis. And that is written by the village and it gives a little narrative overview of the financial statements, a summary. It also gives some highlights of the year and some budgetary information. Also provides a little bit of comparative information to the prior year. So if you're not interested in reading all 70-some pages of the report, I would encourage you to read management's discussion and analysis, which is a much shorter version and should give you the highlights. The financial statements actually begin on page 19. And the first financial statement on Exhibit A is your statement of net position, which is a very high-level view of the village. Just one column of numbers of assets, liabilities, and net position. The village ended fiscal year 2022 in April with a net position of $50.1 million. On the next page is Exhibit B. And that's basically a high-level income statement, but it's presented a little bit different than a normal businesses' income statement. It is presented with your expenses first by function. So you'll see that on the left. And then it's offset by any charges for services that you charge to your, I guess, the users of your services. And any other grant, operating grants and contributions to offset those expenditures. So the $620,000 that you see in that column is the ARPA money that was received and spent during fiscal year 2022. That comes to a net expense number of $7.3 million. So to make up that difference, you have general revenues such as property taxes, sales taxes, income taxes, and other governmental revenues to offset those. And then you came out at a positive increase in net position of $1.2 million to add to the 49 from the prior year to get you to that $50.1 million. That was on the first page. So overall, your net position increased.
Increased.
Yes. And very quickly, those first two statements include capital assets, long-term debt, depreciation, things like that, that your fund financial statements that you're seeing on a monthly basis do not include. So that's just a little bit of a difference of what you see on a regular basis in these, you know, financial statements. Starting on page 21 are your fund financial statements. So that is closer to what you see on a regular basis. In fiscal year 2022, the golf course was sold. And you also created a capital projects fund by transferring assets, mostly from the general fund into that capital projects fund to establish that. So those were kind of the bigger highlights from the year in addition to those ARPA funds that were received. But you'll see on Exhibit C that you have your general fund, your TIF fund, and that's both TIF funds combined into one column there. Legacy Park Fund and then that capital projects fund. All of your other funds are considered non-major and then they're combined into one column there. On page 22, that's just a quick reconciliation to get you from those fund financials to those high-level summary financials that are at the beginning of the report, if you're interested in that. Page 23 is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So again, that's more of a typical kind of income statement that you guys would be used to seeing. And you had a net change in fund balance of a negative $2.4 million. And that's just primarily because you guys had a lot of projects going on during fiscal year 2022. So on these fund financial statements, if you've expended for capital outlay, those are showing as expenses and they're not being capitalized. So that, that's what leads to that, kind of that deficit that you're seeing there. And you will see the capital outlay line was by far the biggest line at $5.5 million. That's close to the middle of the page. You no longer had the golf course fund. That went away in fiscal year 21. Like I said, you guys sold it in fiscal year 22. So there's no business-type or proprietary-type funds in your financial statements. However, you have the pension trust fund and those financial statements start on page 25. Those are audited by another auditor. We rely on that auditor's opinion and then lift those numbers and put those in this report for your financial statements. So those are considered fiduciary funds. They're not yours to use for village operations. So obviously are used for the police pension.
And those pension funds, don't they get transferred to the state now, too?
Eventually, yeah. That's, it's still in the works, but.
Okay, that's, that's supposedly what the plan is, that that's eventually going to get transferred and managed by the state.
Yeah.
There's been a lawsuit that's kind of hung some of that up and so.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't think.
One of the suburbs sued the state. Everything's kind of been on hold while they're sorting that out, so.
Yeah, basically, the state will be managing those investments. And then the, what you would see in the audit report is just kind of like the village's portion, I guess, of that.
Right, it's going to be co-mingled, you know, with all the other money for investment purposes, but as, you know, not co-mingled for any, you know, for other purposes, but just, just for investment to get hopefully a better interest rate.
Correct. So following the numbers on page 27 are the footnotes to the financial statements, which just give you a lot of the accounting policies that are used by the village as well as more details on all those numbers that you saw in the front. There are no significant new disclosures, you know, that came into play this year. So everything should pretty much be the same as last year, I guess, as far as the information that is disclosed. And then following those notes are a bunch of schedules that give you some budgetary information, budget to actual and showing the variance. Shows you your original budget. You did amend your budget at the end of the fiscal year. Shows the amended budget as well, fiscal year. Shows the amended budget as well. And then the actual expenditures compared to budget. There's also a couple pension schedules back there that just show a little bit of trend information and how the IMRF pension fund is doing and then as well as the police pension.
I read in, you know, in the report earlier that the IMRF pension, that, that's financed at over 100%?
It's actually flipped to an asset this year. So your, normally, what would be presented on your financial statements is your pension liability. But right now, the net financial position or the, I don't know if I'm using the right term.
Yeah, I saw where it was at. It was in excess of 100.
Yeah, the fiduciary net position is actually bigger. So all the investments on hand are bigger than the net pension liability or total liability long-term. So your net pension liability is actually a net pension asset for the moment. Those are all based on actuarial numbers and those are volatile. But if you look at those schedules in the back, you can kind of see where it ebbs and flows with the market and with the actuarial assumptions and things like that. Okay? Any other questions on that? So that's the audit report. If you have any questions on what's in here, you can direct them to me or our office or you can ask Chris. He's very knowledgeable about everything in that report as well. And as I mentioned, there's also two letters in front of you. So the thicker letter is our required communication to you as a board. And we went ahead and included all of the adjustments that we made in the audit. Now, some of those adjustments, we do kind of as a convenience for the village as part of the audit. And then other ones are audit adjustments that we noted during our procedures and then those are pointed out in the letter as well. But if we would have had any difficulties in performing the audit or any significant matters that we thought we needed to bring to your attention, this is the letter that we would have done that in. The second letter is called our management letter. And that's just some things that we came across that we feel would be good recommendations for you guys to take a look at. We try to look for best practices and pretty much anything that we find during an audit, we try to communicate in transparency. So that's what this letter is. And these things, like I said, did not rise to the level of a finding that would be reported in the bound audit report, but are things that nevertheless we wanted to bring to your attention, so. The last piece of the audit is the completion of the comptroller's AFR, Annual Financial Report, this electronic report that needs to be completed and submitted. That is done, but I haven't done the final review on it. That's not due till the end of October. So we'll get that done here in the next few days for you and work on getting that submitted.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, looking at the letter here, there are a couple of the different findings that seem pretty minor and easy to, easy to, to take care of and to fix. But I appreciate the, you know, the notifying the village of your recommendations and I'm, you know, sure that we'll put things in place to make sure that those are taken care of.
Very good.
Anybody want to have any other questions in regards to the audit? This is on the board agenda for approval later on in the meeting. As you said, if anyone has questions, forward them to Chris. So if he can't answer them, we can forward them to you or to Sheila.
Well, we do appreciate the village's cooperation because we are in their space and we're in their email and we're in their, on their phones and asking them a lot of questions. So we do bother them and we definitely appreciate their cooperation. They couldn't be better to work with, so.
Well, yeah, when I stop at the village hall and I see the whole team has kind of come in and taken over the conference room. So it's like, you know, it's like the examiner's coming into the banks, you know.
Yeah, we make ourselves at home for a few days.
You know, but I say, we appreciate it. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, all the information is, you know, readily available and easily available to be able to be provided for you. But that's because of the work that they do the other 12 months of the year.
Absolutely. So thank you for the opportunity to do your audit and we'll have another great year.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Carmen. Yeah, we also want to say that we find them very easy to work with as well. They do a great job and it's kind of good fit for us to have them here. I think we'll.
Is this the third year we've done it now?
It's the.
Fifth year?
Fifth year, okay.
See, whatever I think it is, I should just.
Yeah, I think we had a, I think we had a three-year, I think we had a three-year contract at first and we kept extending it, I think.
Maybe a four-year and I think that, yeah, three or four-year and then.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have one other item. Apologize now, I don't think the audio is very good on it, but we do have the Mantino Matters video for this month.
Welcome to Mantino Matters, where we share a plus-on-town from the borough of Mantino. As a reminder, residents can complete the application for the property tax rebate form. You can find the forms at those tall or on our website at villageofmantino.com. Applications for the rebate will be accepted only if you have those paid in full and with all required documents that need to be provided. We will not accept any emails or fax documents. Applications and accompanying documents must be presented in person at the village hall. A fun event that's coming up in October is the Fall Fair on the Square, sponsored by Whitmore Ace Hardware and Luminorillity. On October 22, from noon to two, the Fall Fair on the Square will be held where there are pumpkin tarvies, giveaways, fun entertainment, and more. You can find more information on the village's website or follow the event on Facebook. And now a word from one of our residents.
I've lived in Mantino for 70 years. Well, my mother was raised in Mantino and she and my father got married and made the Mantino their home and we stayed here forever. So Bon Chico is still my favorite. My husband, we have 14 days on a regular basis for ice cream. I've been very involved in a lot of things in town. I'm involved in my church. I've been on the village board. I have been a mail carrier. I spent my career delivering mail in rural Mantino. So we have people from all over the world and they come to our small community and they're amazed at what we have. We have two jewels that you may not know about. One of them is the Mantino Sports Club, which is at the north end of the village. They have a beach and people go there and swim. They have a nice clubhouse where there's parties and patio during the summer months. They have cheerleading every Wednesday. The Mantino Golf Club is another jewel and it's located two miles east of where we started.
Some outdated information I'm.
Yeah, it's an old video, obviously.
We're probably the only town in Mantino County that has a public golf club. It's continually changing and evolving into a beautiful small community with lots of places to go and a lot of good people live here. We all help each other. If somebody's sick, we go to their aid. If somebody has cancer, we have fundraisers. Though we may not be related, we're all family. We know each other. And remember, Mantino Matters is because of you.
Obviously, that video is a little dated. You might want to have Sarah review those a little closer before she puts them out in the future.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Committee reports, Public Works and Utilities, Mr. Boyce.
I have no items tonight. I do have a meeting this month on the 25th at 7:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
I don't have anything tonight, but I think Jim might want to give us an update on what's going on.
A couple things of the parks. Soccer's been going on. There's been some baseball tournaments going on as well at Heritage over at Legacy. Football has another home game this Saturday. Besides that, I think that's about all the park update.
The football had another game up there, you know, over Oktoberfest weekend. Everything go okay there?
Uh, yeah, no, it was fine.
Are they continuing to make a punch list for us of things?
They've been pretty quiet. I think that a couple of the items, refrigerators and a couple of their items we had to straighten out. Other than that, they, they're doing great out there.
Over at Heritage, I see that some of the landscaping that we approved has been, you know, taken place. Is that going okay over there?
Sorry, the, so that southwest field, they redid the infield over there and then they have added the Arbor Vitae's to the, that Field One, that Cal Meyer Field on the backside.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole is not here tonight. The only item she has on the agenda is to announce her public safety meeting on October 12 at 7:00 a.m. here in the village boardroom. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett also is not here and his agenda items include a planning and zoning committee meeting on October 25 at 7:00 a.m. and a planning commission meeting on Tuesday, October 11 at 6:00 p.m. here in the village boardroom. Finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a motion to receive and place on file the village annual audit prepared by Smith, Kelling, Dykstra, and Ohm for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2022, which we just went over here. Also, a motion to receive and place on file the annual TIF reports for fiscal year ending April 30, 2022. And a motion to receive and place on file the annual treasures report for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 and to authorize its publication. In addition, I have payment of bills in the amount of $603,979.93 and bills authorized and paid between board cycle are $114,737.48. Our next TIF, I'm sorry, our next finance meeting is scheduled for October 12 at 7:00 a.m. right now.
Thank you, Mr. Geske. General Government, Mr. Phillips.
I have nothing on the agenda tonight, Mayor.
Uh, so tonight on the consent agenda, the items that we'll be voting on are as follows. Under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, we have a motion to receive and place on file the annual audit prepared by Smith, Kelling, Dykstra, and Ohm for the fiscal year ending April 30, 2022. Item number two is a motion to receive and place on file the annual TIF reports for fiscal year ending April 30, 2022. Item number three is a motion to receive and place on file the annual treasures report for fiscal year 2021, 2022 and authorize its publication. And finally, a motion to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $603,979.93. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to take a single roll call vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read.
So moved.
Motion by Geske. Second by, second by Boyce. Roll call.
Geske?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Accept the motion due, approved by ominous vote, the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read. Motion by Martin.
Second.
By Phillips. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thomas, you have anything tonight, Mr. Boyce?
Just a great job Sarah did again with Oktoberfest and Jimmy at the Public Works. Unbelievable, you know, you guys worked hard. And Al, how you kept us all safe. And I knew we threw more safety precautions in this year because we'd never, you know, I mean, you know, just everybody thinking out of the box. So thanks for keeping us safe and thanks for a great job.
Mr. Martin?
I've only been in this town 35 years and last weekend, never ever seen that many people swarm this town. So words out. It's a nice town. Everything went good. Or, you know, the same way. It was ridiculously calm and, and well. So, so job well done and it was really fun.
Yeah, got a lot of comments about the new, you know, different appearance of Main Street, too, with the arches and the lights and the planters and the flowers and, you know, nice to get all that done right before, you know, that many people came to town, you know. I mean, we see it day in and day out, but a lot of people might only be in town a couple times a year and nice to be able to show off some of the things that got done right before. So kudos to everybody for getting all that done, too. Mr. Geske?
Same thing. Kudos to everyone, thanks.
Mr. Phillips?
I agree and I got a lot of people telling me how nice it was.
All right, I have nothing further. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Geske. Everybody want to second?
I will.
Second by Martin. Roll, roll call.
Geske?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming and for watching.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for coming and for watching.